The time is now seven o'clock and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carubas?
Here.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Ms. Peal?
Here.
Mr. Ising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We are all present. Ms. Peal, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of board salutes, so I'm going to begin with Ms. Demming.
Former District 204 student performs at Grammys. The board salutes Kelsey Vanderall, a two thousand nine graduate of Nikwa Valley High School, who performed on this year's Grammy Award show with Lizzo. Kelsey is a freelance cellist based in Chicago. She has previously performed with many artists, including Grammy Award-winning artists Paula Cole and Todd Rundgren. This was her first time performing on the Grammy stage, and as a personal note, I was very, I'm so excited about this. She is a former babysitter for my girls, so this is very special to me. Congratulations, Kelsey.
Thanks. Ms. Peal?
The board salutes sixty Indian Prairie High School students who were recognized as part of the two thousand twenty Scholastic Arts Award. The suburban Chicago art region, which serves DuPage, Kane, Kendall, Will, and portions of Cook County, had over two thousand entries. Sixteen 204 students received Gold Key Awards, twenty-one students received Silver Key Awards, and twenty-three students received honorable mentions. Artwork that received Gold Key recognition will be digitally submitted to the national competition, where they will compete against Gold Key winners from regional shows across America. The Scholastic Arts Award is the nation's longest-running and most prestigious scholarship and recognition program for creative teens. Congratulations to all the students on this stellar achievement.
Thank you. Mr. Carubas?
The board salutes the fifty District 204 high school student musicians who were selected by the Illinois Music Education Association to perform at the Illinois State Music Festival. Indian Prairie annually places at the top of school districts statewide in the number of student musicians selected for this conference. This year, District 204 had students performing in the all-state choir, orchestra, band, and jazz band. Additionally, three District 204 students have been named as selectees for the IMEA Future Music Educator Seminar, which is coordinated and taught by District 204 music educators Lori and Jonathan Lauf. Congratulations to all involved. Good work.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
The board salutes Nikwa Valley seniors Raul Cool and Abraham Islam for being named the winners of the Congressional App Challenge in Illinois's fourteenth district by Representative Lauren Underwood. The students submitted Quick Save, an app that improves the response time for police and school resource officers to research victims in emergency situations. The Congressional App Challenge is an initiative of the U.S. House of Representatives, where members of Congress host contests in their districts for middle school and high school students. The contest encourages them to learn to code and inspires them to pursue careers in computer science. That's so way cool. Congratulations to Rahul and Abraham.
Great. And, Mr. Ising?
The board salutes Brooks Elementary Fourth Grade Teacher Michael Miller on receiving the two thousand twenty Phenomenal Man of the Year Award by the Aurora Mentoring Group Boys to Men. The award was presented as part of the National Mentoring Month. This year's class of phenomenal men was comprised of educators, entrepreneurs, and executives in finance and media. Congratulations, Michael, on all your work with our students.
And last but not least, Ms. Grover?
Nikwa Valley teacher receives Teacher of the Year Award. Tony Take Meyer of Nikwa Valley High School was recognized by Project Lead the Way as the Engineering Teacher of the Year. This is the highest recognition for Project Lead the Way engineering educators. Tony received the award on February eighth in front of nearly a thousand teachers from across the U.S. at Project Lead the Way's National Conference in Indianapolis. The award is based on merit and is a reflection of Tony's strong alignment to Project Lead the Way's mission, exceptional commitment to students, leadership, and meaningful involvement in curriculum, assessment, and professional development. Congratulations, Tony, on this outstanding achievement.
And thank you. It is now time for a student representative report from Wabonzi Valley High School, and we have Chris Chung with us. Welcome, Chris.
Hello, my name is Chris Chung. I'm a senior of Wabonzi Valley, here to give the student school board report. A second semester starts off, the battle against cold weather and senioritis takes on more meaning. And while that struggle may be very real, Warriors are stronger than ever. As competition season for all clubs and activities begin, Wabonzi has found itself great success. Chess and Scholastic Bowl are competing at state this upcoming weekend. Show Choir has entered Tech Week, where they fine-tune and finalize their national-level performance. Model UN competed this past weekend with over ten students taking high honors at their state-level competition. FCCLA had over thirty students compete in regionals, eighteen that finished among the top three at their event, and eleven whom were first-place finishers. DECA and BPA have both qualified, over twenty state attendees, and will continue to have a strong presence at the national stage later in the year. In recognition of Black History Month, our Black Student Association has created a daily Fentevax sharing initiative and a community wall highlighting historical achievements from the African-American community. These are just a few highlights of the nearly sixty clubs and activities that we have at Wabonzi. Moving on to athletics, the Wabonzi Athletic Department saw a total of three hundred and five student athletes compete during the winter season in a total of eight sports. These sports included everything from boys' and girls' basketball, boys' swimming, girls' bowling, girls' gymnastics, wrestling, cheerleading, and dance. Three of these sports concluded their competitive seasons within the last two weeks. The girls' bowling team competed at the IHSA Regionals over the weekend, while both cheerleading and dance competed their respective seasons, or completed their respective seasons in Bloomington, and they both qualified for state. For cheerleading, that amounted to sixteenth in the state, while the dance team qualified for finals and finished their season twelfth in the state. Girls' gymnastics finished second at their IHSA Regional Meet and qualified five individuals in four events for sectionals this week. Wrestling competed in the IHSA Regionals over the weekend and had three individuals qualify for sectionals. Senior Charlie Millington and senior Nick Denvek and sophomore Antonio Torres. Both Millington and Torres received regional champions this year. Boys' swimming finished second in the DuPage Valley Conference over this last weekend, winning five of the twelve events at the meet. The swim team will be gearing up for the IHSA Sectionals in two weeks. Although boys' basketball suffered a tough, tough loss over the weekend to Nikwa Valley, they're still enjoying an incredibly successful season, currently holding a twenty-two and four record. Girls' basketball is on a two-game win streak as they head into their final week of the regular season. They look to sweep the Valleys this Thursday night on Senior Night. Lastly, but certainly not least, academics. Wind Ensemble and Chamber Strings performed at the Illinois Music Educators Conference in front of more than a hundred music educators. This is an honor, as the organization group only asked top-level groups to perform. The WV Art Department had sixteen students receive Scholastic awards for their work. Several of them are moving on to the national Scholastic Competition. Course selection is currently underway for the next year, and along with the unique classes, club opportunities, and diverse elective choices, this time of year truly highlights the extensive and unique opportunities District 204 provides for their students. Now, that is all for Warrior Update. That is all for the Wabonzi Valley School Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors.
Thanks, Chris. No one has signed up for public comment today, so we move to Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We'll begin with Dr. Sullivan.
Okay. Registration currently is open for Team IPEF two thousand twenty. This will be the Indian Prairie Education Foundation's seventh year to represent District 204 as a charity partner in the Healthy Driven Naperville Half Marathon and Five K, which will take place on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty. October eighteenth, two thousand twenty. So, Team, there you go. Very good. Team IPEF, which includes parents, staff, community members, students, and school board members.
Former superintendents?
Maybe former superintendents, have been the top participating charity since two thousand fourteen, and over the last six years, a total of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five Team IPEF members have taken part in efforts, and they've raised more than eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for District 204 schools. So, IPEF obviously invites you to sign up and join others, where, you know, half the money raised goes to the school that you designate directly back. Registration is open until March eighth, and you can find more information about it on the IPEF website, which is www.ipef204.org. And there will again be a Team IPEF Kids Marathon for students ages four to fourteen. That'll take place the day before, on October seventeenth. It will be at Nikwa Valley High School, and registration for the Kids Marathon will open on April sixth. So, some of the funds, obviously, that IPEF raises goes to support robotics in our district, and we want to thank the many volunteers who helped us out with our middle school robotics tournament this last past weekend. Our elementary robotics tournament is scheduled for Saturday, March seventh, at the Burkett Freshman Center, so mark your calendars for that one. But we want to thank, those events take a lot of people to help make that work, and a lot of volunteers, so we really want to thank them for that. That's it.
Thank you. Move to the consent agenda items, and I need a motion for board approval of consent agenda items D through K as presented.
Make a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through K as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Ising?
Aye.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're moving to our first action item, and I need a motion for the consideration and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and Indian Prairie School District 204 regarding tax increment financing.
I move for the consideration and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and Indian Prairie School District 204 regarding tax increment financing throughout fifty-nine corridor, Board Policy One dash twenty, District Organization, Operations, and Cooperative Agreements.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Strang.
Good evening, board members. Mr. Dalianis and I have been meeting with the City of Aurora for a number of months, working on an intergovernmental agreement that addresses the Route Fifty-Nine Corridor and some of the developments and redevelopments along that area. It's been a collaborative process, at times a frustrating process, a good give and take, and I think we have a really great document that's going to support the school district moving forward. I'll let Mr. Dalianis go through some of the major points of that, but at the end of the day, we're asking for you to approve this recommendation. The Finance Committee with the city will be looking at it on the thirteenth of this month, and City Council on the eighteenth. So, we should have a final document pretty shortly here, and we'll have a roadmap for moving forward.
Thank you. This intergovernmental agreement addresses development in the Route Fifty-Nine Corridor, potentially a TIF district item. So, the City of Aurora has approved a tax increment financing district for the Seventy-Fifth Street and Ogden Avenue TIF, which will be subject to this agreement. Any other TIFs that are created, say, at or around the Fox Valley Mall, would be subject to this as well. As Jay said, it was a collaborative process. We view this as a win-win, both for School District 204 and the City of Aurora, emphasizing the school district's desire for economic growth and growth in the tax base that will allow to happen under this agreement, at the same time being mindful of some of the limitations that TIF districts can impose on school districts. We feel we've addressed that with items like the term of the TIF district, what happens with porting, and when new students come into an area that is subject to TIF, how will that be addressed. We're comfortable it's been addressed in a positive way, collaboratively, that, like I said, is a win-win for both parties. So, as Jay said, we're asking for the board to approve this tonight. It will be the subject of the city's finance meeting on Thursday, the thirteenth, and then a City Council meeting on the eighteenth, where it's anticipated it will be approved by the city as well.
Questions, comments?
I'm just going to comment. This was a really good agreement, and I appreciate all the work you guys have put into it. Appreciate the partnership with the city, and I think it is important that we keep abreast of what's going on, and we keep monitoring it as people leave our board, that we know what we're supposed to be monitoring, so we have a system in place for that, too. So, that's cool.
Yeah, I'll just echo some of the same things. You know, first of all, to the mayor and his staff, he came and visited us two and a half, three years ago, when he first shortly got elected, and I apologize to the city staff for all the planning council meetings I attended for a year and a half. But, you know, I thank the City of Aurora for working collaboratively with us on this intergovernmental agreement, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue this positive relationship. So, and thanks to Jay and Eris as well.
Others?
Can I just publicly thank Jay especially on this, because he did, I don't even know how many hours and hours of meetings, or phone calls, or emails, or all those kinds of things that he's did, you know, with the City of Aurora officials, and Eris for your part in putting together an agreement that I don't think many other school districts can say that they have with the city. So, no one, I think in those agreements, what do you, what do you attorneys say? You know, if nobody's, if both sides aren't totally happy, it's a good agreement?
It's a good agreement, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's like contracts, right, Katie? Same thing. And I think that's the case here, but I think, you know, in looking for the future of the school district, you know, we think that we've got the best deal possible, and we do thank the city for continuing to sit at the table with us to do that.
Yes, and in this case, we've been working for about a year and a half, two years. At times, different governmental entities have to serve different purposes and different constituencies, and I really appreciate that the City of Aurora and the school district work cooperatively for the benefit of all, and it was, over a course of time, a great agreement. So, I clearly thank the mayor and the city officials. I actually thank everybody here on the board who has played some role over the course of the last one and a half to two years. We've been involved with the process. We've been active in the process, and I appreciate everyone's work. Eris, thanks for everything you do.
You're welcome.
And as Dr. Sullivan, you took the words out of my mouth. For two, two and a half years, Mr. Strang has worked tirelessly. He's been tired. In order to come to an agreement that is to the satisfaction of both the governmental entities, so thank you, Jay, for everything that you've done, and thanks everyone here. I think we have a good agreement that benefits all. With that, any other comment? Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Ising?
Yes.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And thank you, Eris.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And because Jay is so tired, we're going to let him do his budget presentation, and so we're going to skip to that discussion, I hope that's okay with you.
Good evening again, board members. I've got Matt Shipley here, our district comptroller, who's going to assist with this presentation. He actually developed these slides and did a nice job putting it together. This is our first forecast. It's, as you know, because you've been on the board for a while, we will continue to keep you informed as Springfield and things come together, as the sun starts to warm up the earth and we get closer to the summertime. So, when we get into April, May, and June, we'll know a lot more about the forecast, but this is our first opportunity to share with you.
Yeah, as Jay mentioned, this is our first of several presentations, as we start looking towards the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, which, you know, sounds like it's far away, but obviously it's only a couple months out now. So, just wanted to quickly overview what we're presenting tonight, or what we see as part of the forecasting process. So, first, the forecast that you see this evening is really one snapshot in time of a continual process. It's a continual process that's integrated with our annual audit, our monthly financial reports that you, as the board, see, and will become the main piece that we start with when we build our budget in the spring and early summer. Our focus this evening really is on a five-year timeline, so when we look to the budget, we're really starting to narrow that focus into primarily that next fiscal year. With the forecast, we're looking, really taking a medium-term outlook and trying to see how decisions that we make over the next six months or so impact us, not just in the short term, but in that medium term as well. We're going to take a high-level overview of all district operations and funds this evening as part of the forecast, but our emphasis is really going to be on the available resources or revenues of the district. As you know, as a school district in Illinois, we really have limited ability to control our revenue, and so this is really our focus, is to start with the revenue first, to see where we have some opportunities or challenges on the expenditure side. So, finally, with the expenditures that we do present tonight are really at a high level, and are going to be more of a preliminary nature, so we do expect to see some changes, more changes on the expenditure side than on the revenue side as we go forward. So, tonight's presentation, we're first going to just look at the highest level of an operating fund overview. Secondly, we're going to take a quick detour a little bit and look at some of our fund balance, or how our fund balance works throughout the school year. So, most of the numbers we present tonight are annual, but with some of the talk that came out of the property tax steering committee out of Springfield, there were some discussions related to fund balance levels specifically concerning school districts, and we felt that this was a good opportunity to look at that topic tonight. We'll cover some of the main assumptions that go into our property taxes and then state revenues, because these are the two largest revenue sources of the district. As mentioned, we'll quickly cover expenditures, and then we'll close looking at our non-operating funds, which is capital and debt service, and then finally, you know, show you how we plan to go forward and eventually turn this forecast into our spending plan for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
You might notice, since Mr. Shipley put this presentation together, it's a little longer than mine. Feel free to ask.
There's also no stick figures.
Ask questions along the way.
All right. So, with that said, we'll start with the operating funds forecast, and again, this is six of the eight district funds that are considered the operating funds under the State Board of Education's accounting guidelines. I'll highlight that the biggest takeaway we want to point out is that for both the budget of two thousand twenty that's presented here and the five forecast years, we project these, each of these years will result in recognition status by the State Board of Education, which is the set board goal for our financial operations. The two main things that kind of drive that calculation are first, that the budget is balanced, and so if you look at our excess or deficit line, about two-thirds down, you'll see that each year we're projecting a slight surplus. That surplus ranges from about five hundred thousand in the final year of the forecast to about two-point-two million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. So, under the state guidelines, passing a balanced budget is the first component to receive recognition status, and then the second component is looking at the very last line, which is the fund balance as a percentage of revenues. And the target there is to keep it above twenty-five percent, and we are keeping it above twenty-five percent for all years, although we are showing a decrease slightly throughout the five years of the forecast. That surplus, you know, is effectively a balanced budget. That represents less than one percent of total revenues or total expenditures. Each of the five years, we're projecting on average about a two-point-six percent increase in both revenues and expenditures. On the expenditure side, that's spread evenly across most of the expenditure categories. On the revenue side, that's primarily an increase in local revenues, so we'll get, we'll cover that in a bit more detail when we look at the property tax and some of the assumptions behind that.
The other thing I'd like to point out is that Dr. Sullivan's cabinet is working to discuss what we're doing in the district that we maybe don't want to continue to do to free up some more money, and try to grow that excess so that we can spend some money on evidence-based funding. So, as the budget starts to form and we get closer to the spring, that one-point-eight million dollars for twenty-one will certainly change as we try to figure out how to support classrooms with some of that extra money.
Just real quickly, here is the revenues by the significant funding source, and this pie chart has really stayed the same for, really, for the past several years within the district, and you'll see that property tax is by far the largest revenue source we have, representing seventy-seven percent of total revenue. The second-largest piece is state revenue, which is split between evidence-based funding and other state revenue, and that represents just fifteen percent. So, again, as we cover state funding in a bit, you know, the states made a commitment to potentially increase that funding source, but at least for the time being, it's stayed relatively consistent around fifteen percent. The other two sources that, because they're smaller, we won't cover in a lot of detail tonight, are the other local revenues, five percent. That includes things like participation fees, registration fees, lunch receipts, and then any investment revenue we're able to earn as the district, and then finally, federal revenues, which represent just three percent of total district revenue.
Now, we're going to take just a short detour from the forecast and talk about our cash flow and our summary of our fiscal year. And the reason we're doing this is there's some talk in Springfield about fund balances, and fund balances are a particular point in time. It's a snapshot of the school district. It's a one-day period in time, and school districts are all trying to figure out how they can manage their fund balances and maybe account for their funds differently so that they aren't impacted by any legislation that comes out of Springfield. This first graph, what you can see is really, in the green lines, are revenue sources. We have a spike in September, which is an installment of taxes, and we have another spike in May, which is our second installment of taxes. That's over two levy years, so we really split our levy. Half of it funds one year, half of it funds the next year. You can see our expenditures in our red line. It jumps up in June because we pay our classified staff out. We don't pay them for July and August, and we pay them out for their year. And then what you can see is our fund balance with our high point of about two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars, and then it drops down close to fifty million dollars. During the recession, that low point down there, there was a time when we were hovering around five or seven million dollars in that May period of time before our spring installment of taxes. What you can see then is what happens is we get our taxes, and that jumps up now, and that is the period of time where we receive the thirty-two percent fund balance to revenue ratio that's on the bottom of the summary sheet. It's at one point in time. Some of the things that other districts, and some of our comparable districts are doing, who have more money than us, is that they're deferring their installment of taxes. So, that next slide, what you see is they're taking their spring installment of taxes and they're pushing it into the next fiscal year. So, they're getting their taxes in May and in September, early in that fiscal year. Now, this is what it would look like if we were to do that. We would get our installment of taxes. You can see that the blue You can see that the blue line is still the same at its high point in time. You can see that our expenditures are the same. But our fund balance drops down below zero because we don't have the high fund balances that are available to keep us above that. Some of our districts are, we've taken five or six years to move money into Fund 60 for operations and maintenance. Some of our neighboring districts are moving much more than that in one fiscal year to reduce their fund balances. And then they are deferring their taxes to get their money down to where it looks like that one point in time in June 30th, when they report that they've only got 10 or 15% in fund balances. I thought it was important for you board members to know that because I know that you talk with legislators all the time. I know that you talk with board members from other schools. And as that comes up and you start to hear that concept, I wanted you to understand what that, what that looks like. Any questions on that?
And that it's not an option for us.
It is not an option for us.
The more logical solution, which means it's not gonna happen, would be to change the definition of fund balance. Thank you.
And we don't have extra to move into Fund 60 either.
No.
Like some of our neighbors.
Was, just out of curiosity, was, was this strategy that other districts do to make them, their fund balances look lower, was this discussed, to your knowledge, during the tax committee that our governor put together?
It's, it's been, this concept has happened in other, in a handful of districts that I'm aware of. But now that they're discussing going after fund balances and if you're carrying a healthy fund balance, forcing you to spend that down or to not levy your full amount, all those, all of those concepts have accelerated folks deferring their taxes to the next fiscal year to really change what their balance looks like. A school district could have a 60% fund balance compared to our 32% fund balance. And by resolution, moving money into Fund 60 and then deferring those taxes, they could, in the next year, show a 15% fund balance.
They can make themselves look like they carry a lower fund balance than we do.
Yes, yes. You might find a legislator asking you as a board member, "How come you're carrying so many fund balances when a neighboring district doesn't?" And you're gonna know now that they're accounting for it differently.
Thanks.
Has anybody ever explained fund balance to legislators?
And there are no penalties anticipate discussion-wise in order to not have that?
The legislators in Springfield are really gonna have to, as Mr. Carrubus said, define what the fund balance is and really come up with the rules about what, what is it and how can you account for it.
No discussions currently though around it?
No.
I'll just quickly add, one of the issues that comes up in these discussions is they're hearing from other local governments too, municipalities, counties, who maybe aren't as reliant on property taxes. And so that chart looks very different to them too, where they maybe don't have that wide of a variety between their high point and low point or between their ending year and some of those peaks. And so some of this, you know, could come from, you know, municipalities who see the higher balance and don't understand that, you know, as a school district, we're not receiving some of the additional income sources on a more regular basis than they are. Municipalities also report at different fiscal year ends too. They're primarily December year ends or April year ends. And so again, they're not reporting kind of mid-property tax cycle like we are. All right, so after covering some of the challenges that being a property tax-dependent district creates for our fund balance, we're gonna kind of look at some of the key assumptions we've put into the forecast for property taxes going forward. As a district subject to PTEL, really, there's three factors that are gonna drive the amount of property tax revenue we receive as a district. And that's the amount of new property added to the district, the consumer price index, and then finally, the district's collection rate or what percentage of taxes levy do we actually collect. Fortunately, that third one, we've historically been very high and well over 99%. So we won't cover that this evening. But for the other two, we just wanna briefly cover some of the assumptions we built into new property. For every $10 million of new property in the district, we generate about $500,000 of new annual revenue. And that's revenue that kind of compounds. So we receive it the first year that new property is on, on the tax rolls and that it continues to be part of that, that extension each year. As you'll see, our historical average over the past five years has been just over $60 million in new property. And that's generated $3 million in new revenue. For the 2019 levy, we actually had the highest year we've had in many years with 99.2 million in new property, which resulted in approximately $5 million in new revenue. We're, we're taking a lower amount going forward for the next five levies compared to both those numbers, both those numbers estimating about $55.5 million in new property annually. So we expect that to generate about $2.8 million in new revenue. As you know, the district is a relatively mature district, and there are limited opportunities for, for new developments throughout, throughout our area. So we feel, we feel confident in the $55 million number, but we, and we don't really expect to hit the 99.0 million that we, that we did this past year. We feel that was more of a one-year outlier and not expected to repeat going forward.
Relate this back to the previous agenda item where we were discussing TIPS. So $10 million in new property, that is property that is not included in the TIF. So it's, it benefits the district to have non-TIF property so that we have this additional revenue. So if, explain to me what happens with redevelopment. So we are mostly built out. And now they take a parking lot and make an apartment building out of that. Is that considered new property?
Yes. Yes, if, if I lived in the district and I was to tear down my ranch home and put up a 4,000-square-foot home, that would be new property. We also run into decommissioned property where a store was there, it didn't, it didn't operate well, the business wasn't there, and it gets bulldozed. That comes off the books.
Thank you.
Jay, quick question on the new property forecast. That historically, when we're talking about forecasts, you're always pretty conservative on our, with our forecasts. And do we kind of see probably falling somewhere between that 55 and 99? Is this 55 probably lower end?
Yeah, I think that is absolutely one of the areas where I'm more conservative. Mrs. Don, you mentioned that earlier, and Matt and I debated it. And we, we talked with our colleagues about what they're seeing, you know, as a percent of new property. We are, we are generally much higher in new property than any of our neighboring districts. People wanna come here and live here. To the TIF discussion, most of our new property has been residential. So the fact that, that IGA doesn't have residential in the TIF kind of keeps us operating as we always have. I would expect that we come in higher than the 55. Three or four years ago, when the economy was a little slower, we were putting in $45 million as, as our hope for new property.
Thank you.
As mentioned, consumer price index is then the, the next main driver of what our, what our tax levy will be going forward. You know, similar chart shows that we had five years of experience of about 1.45% of an average CPI, which generated just over $4 million annually. For both the 2019 levy passed in December and the 2020 levy that will be passing in December of 2020, we, we already know the CPI used for both those levies. That number's a year in arrears when it's used in the levy. So the 2019 levy had included a 1.9% CPI factor. The 2020 levy will, will include a 2.3%. And then going forward, we're forecasting 2%. That's, that's used almost unanimously by our comparable districts as well. And again, compared to what we've seen, both with those historical and the two most recent years, is pretty much right in line with, with our actual experience. For each 0.1% in that consumer price index, we receive approximately $300,000 more revenue. So the difference, again, between a 1.9 and 2.3 is almost $1.2 million, as shown there. So using those, those two key assumptions, you can see how we forecast our property tax levies over the next five years compared with the historical average. And we're projecting to be relatively consistent with that historical average of increasing about $10 million each year, or seeing about a 3% increase each year in our property tax levies. As Jay mentioned, as part of the fund balance presentation, each property tax levy is split 50/50 in each, each fiscal year. So we'll see roughly $10 million increase in property tax revenue each of those fiscal years, five from one levy and five from the other. Just wanted to briefly discuss how these assumptions will impact our taxpayers' tax rate. So the key relationship there is how the assessed value of current property in the district, how that value changes compared to the CPI. So if our property tax holders are seeing an increase in their valuation above CPI, we'll expect the property tax rates to decrease. And then the opposite is also true. If our, if the EAV is not changing as, as quickly as CPI is, our property tax holders could see, will see a tax rate increase. So as this, this shows, we've been fortunate over the past five years. And we project as well to similarly see EAV changes exceed CPI. So as a result, we expect the property tax rates to decrease throughout the period of this forecast. And that's shown on this last slide here. And the interesting thing about this is 2014, which is, I guess, five years prior now already, that's actually the highest, the operating tax rate that the district had seen. And that was at the peak of the impact of the recession. The total tax rate came in just over, just over six. The current levy at 2019 is 5.34. That's the total of both the debt service and the operating tax levy. And if these assumptions hold, we would expect the tax rate to get under five in that fiscal year 2024, or, sorry, levy year 2024. So next, we wanna turn over to, and cover state funding sources. And again, the two main sources here are evidence-based funding, which in fiscal year 2020 was just over 40 million. And then we'll also discuss the categorical payments, which in fiscal year 2020 is just over 14 million. This is the third year of the evidence-based funding formula, which replaced general state aid. And I think we're gonna be a little critical of EBF and some of the potential benefits it has to the district. But I'll say that with the caveat that we're definitely in a better position than we were under GSA. And that's really because of two components within the EBF. The first is that there's a hold harmless component, where we are at least guaranteed to receive the same amount we received in the prior year. So that provides some base level of funding and some level of certainty on that piece. And then when the state passed the evidence-based funding initiative back in 2017, they did also make a commitment to additional incremental funding each year that, that didn't exist under the GSA model. So even though I think we're gonna show in a little bit that we're still not projecting significant increases, I think we're at least in a better place than we were under the general state aid model. So this, this does show the evidence-based funding kind of brief history for the five largest districts in the state, which include Indian Prairie. And these five districts make up just under 25% of total enrollment throughout the state. So there's about, there's about, between 1.9 and 2 million students enrolled in public schools throughout the state of Illinois. This represents, these districts represent about 500,000 of those students. Obviously, Chicago Public Schools makes up the largest portion at 18.6%. And then Elgin is pretty much on its own in second. And then Indian Prairie, Rockford, and Plainfield were kind of all grouped together in those three through five areas. And what we're showing here, I think there's two things that, that stand out. The first is of the five largest districts, only one is in Tier Two. And that, of course, is Indian Prairie. And then the other four districts are all in Tier One. So all four of the other largest districts that, again, you know, represent just short of 25% of total enrollment, all have a lower adequacy level than Indian Prairie. Secondly, you can see that when comparing how that number was initially calculated in 2018 with how it was calculated in 2020, we've really only seen marginal gains for, for all five of these districts. And the, the average went from 64.6 funded to 66.1. So again, I think the message is that while we've maybe obtained kind of a base level or a hold harmless level of funding, we've not really seen significant incremental fundings, at least for, for these five districts.
And the reason for that is just because Tier One gets priority over Tier Two?
Yes, that, there's, there's two kind of pieces of the formula that I'd say drive that. The first is correct, that Tier One gets priority. And then the Tier One districts are also included in the Tier Two funding model. So even though on its face, they say 49% of the funding goes to Tier Two, because those Tier One districts can also take part in that funding, Tier One districts end up getting about 90% of that funding. The second piece is that it's, it's calculated that the more needy district you are, even within Tier One, the more funding you get. So these four districts that are in Tier One, you know, their adequacy numbers are in the, for the most part, the low 60s. A lot of that early funding, those first two or three years, really went to districts that were even lower than that. And some of those districts have seen some significant increases. And specifically, I know Cicero District, Waukegan District, being some of the larger districts that were in that, that range, that maybe started in the low 50s. But really, I think this shows that it's gonna take a while for both these districts to get up to, to a higher level of adequacy and then for that to enable some of that additional funding to come our way at Indian Prairie.
So there are some districts that are Tier Three and Tier Four, which means there are some districts that have over 100% adequacy. And it goes back to one of the charts that you had before, which is the 15% that we get from the state.
Yes.
It's a small portion, or so it seems. But it's one of the most critical portions in order to make our district and other districts that are Tier One and Two function.
I think that's absolutely true. And as we demonstrate with the property tax slide, we, as a district subject to, to the PTEL laws, you know, that property tax level is really locked in. And this, this evidence-based funding, I think, is really our best hope for significant additional funding. But again, it looks like that's several years away, if, if at all in our future.
You had, you had to put up this slide, didn't you, Matt? I think important to note here too is that these other districts that you listed, because local revenue is based on assessed value of property. Important to note here is the majority of these areas do not have, when you look at equality, these other areas don't have high equalized assessed values as we do, except for the city of Chicago. Important to note there too is the city of Chicago can also receive money from the city of Chicago. And they're not just receiving money from the state and local, local resources. They can also receive money from the city, of which other public school districts cannot. But I'll just leave it at that. But I think that's an important point to note in all of this.
And I, I like this particular chart because I think it's really important for us to see what, what we are able to do as a district, although we are at, you know, the 2018 and 2020 80% adequacy level, what we are able to do with our resources and the, the things that our district and our administration and staff and teachers commit to doing and the success that we're able to achieve even under these particular circumstances. So while we continue to strive to see that adequacy level enhance for us, So, while we continue to strive to see that adequacy level enhance for us, we are being able to do quite a bit where we are now, so extremely appreciative.
Can I just ask another question to dovetail off what Susan said, just real quick? With evidence-based funding, that's coming to primarily the Tier One and Tier Two school districts, is the state looking at where that money is being spent per district?
Not yet, but that will happen. And to your point, Mrs. Demme, I'm confident that many, if not all, of our comparable districts don't have discussions about where we spend our money in their cabinets like we do in our district. We, you know, we've got a huge budget, and we can spend an hour talking about $200,000. And we could spend several cabinet meetings talking about how are we going to squeeze these dollars and where is the best place to put them. And I think it makes us a better school district, because we really value everything, and really want to make sure we're doing what's right for kids. And we don't have the luxury of just saying, you know, here's $5 million, do what you want with it, and not hold anybody accountable. We hold each other accountable.
So, we do have to fill out an evidence-based funding spending plan. So, we do tell them where that money goes, but there really hasn't been any evaluation that I know of about that.
The state's not monitoring where they're putting the money.
Yeah, I don't know that, yet.
And there's certain places where there's certain designations where it can go and where it can't go.
Well, where they would like it to go.
There's the 27 indicators, but they're not measuring that you're putting that money necessarily in the 27 indicators.
I don't know that. We just fill it out, we want to be spending it the way we're supposed to be spending it.
Yeah, I think Dr. Sullivan's correct. The concept was that you were given autonomy how to spend it, but maybe you were strongly encouraged to focus on a specific element or two. And we have filled those reports out, and I don't think much has come of it yet. After year five of evidence-based funding is where the state is set, again, by statute to kind of review it. And so, we'd expect that to maybe be, maybe the first point where maybe some of that analysis is done in a greater detail. Again, one of the challenges for us at the funding level we're going to see is, you know, $800,000, which is what we're projecting through this forecast, is really an increase of 2.5% or 3%. So, it's going to be a challenge for us to really, really find areas where we can really make a difference with that money. It's, and I know we came to the board last year with some elements to fund, and we hope to do that again this year, too. But, again, we're unfortunately not looking at this maybe being the game changer that it had been marketed as when it passed a couple of years ago.
I think it's still being marketed that way. That's why in the news, you hear all about, you know, the additional funding to the schools, but it's sad to look at this and see that it hardly moved the needle, and how woefully underfunded these school districts are.
Yeah, and I think the point, and I know you made a good point in the comments before the meeting about looking at specifically Rockford, which looks totally unchanged even as a Tier One district. You know, the other part to consider is that costs go up, and Consumer Price Index and increases in projected expenditures are included in this formula, too. Districts that experience demographic changes, so, you know, we've seen across the state a significant increase in ELL population even over the past three years. So, that's, you know, had an impact on the adequacy level. And, yeah, when you start with a point that was really so unfunded, it, the formula struggles to keep up. Just the math just doesn't work with the level we started at.
Any number of other things can impact it as well. Pension cost shift, we've talked in here about transportation expenses going up, and that is certainly something that's built into this forecast, that is impacting this forecast.
Minimum teacher salary.
Collective bargaining can impact all of this. And so, you know, as much as you'd like to think that $800,000 is going to go to an evidence-based funding module, one of those elements, it might go to balancing the budget, because transportation is now increasing at 9.5%.
So, I wanted to ask you, you said that we get the amount we get from the state, from previous state, that that doesn't change, we might get more. So, looking at the slide, I'm just curious, it's just very little, but why would Rockford go down?
Yeah, that's a, excuse me, that's a good question. I think I, I'll do it a little bit. With Rockford's case specifically, they saw a significant increase in their ELL population over the past three years. And so, when you really dig into the formula, what happens is even though they received more money, the adequacy funding said they needed more money to educate a higher ELL population than they had in prior years. And so, that new money they received, even though as a Tier One district, they received, I think, I think it was about 20 million over the period, you know, their needs grew faster in that and kept that number relatively unchanged or even decreased slightly. And that, you know, with our number, that could happen to us, too, if we did see it, you know, an increase in enrollment, or specifically, an increase in one of these targeted areas that require additional resources. So, ELL, Title I or Low Income and Special Education are all populations that the new formula recognizes require additional resources to educate, and, you know, have some real challenges there. But, again, with the, you know, just being able to fund those fast enough, and in some cases, the expenditures are still outpacing the amount of additional revenue.
Do you foresee us going into Tier One?
Yeah, we're pretty much stuck in the middle of Tier Two right now. We're kind of in no man's land, where we're not one of the districts President Razak referenced earlier, that's sitting above 90%. But, the Tier One to Tier Two cutoff stayed about, I think it's about 67% right now. So, we're quite a way off from being in that range, too.
It's recalculated every year, too.
Right, right. The Tier One rate, the 90% that separates Tier Two and Tier Three is set. It's that Tier One to Tier Two range that they recalculate annually, and hopefully, it'll eventually creep up and, you know, we'll at least be closer to that number. But, again, through two or, through three years of this, it's stayed relatively in the same range. It hasn't moved much.
The general state aid formula was pretty easy to predict. There was only a few things that were out there that impacted it statewide, and that was whether or not the state was going to prorate general state aid. But then, if you knew your property values and you knew the number of kids, you could really look out four or five years and have a good sense of what you're going to get in GSA. Under evidence-based funding, you're not isolated. What happens in every other school district impacts what could happen for you. So, big changes to Rockford or Chicago could impact us positively or negatively. You'd have to really do an evaluation of all those different schools to get a sense of what does evidence-based funding look like for us two, three, four years down the line.
I just had a quick, when we look at expenditure per pupil for each of the school districts, are they really, those percentages really don't relate to that, correct?
Well, correct, I think correct, and I'll hopefully understood your question. But, the adequacy percentage, based on some of the unique student factors, it's recognizing that that operating expense per pupil should not be the same for every district. So, we'd have to, offhand, we could look at the district specifically and see how they compared, but if you have a district that has, again, a higher ELL population or a higher low-income percentage, the adequacy level, the adequacy formula is going to say that they should have a higher operating expense per pupil, but then, depending on the actual amount of funding that district receives, they may not.
Okay.
It's a weighted average daily attendance now.
Okay.
All right, well, sorry if we killed the mood with that slide, but we'll move on to expenditures. And again, just going to cover this at a high level, you know, future presentations on the budget will go into much more detail on expenditures. But, similar to revenues, this really shows that our expenditures have, distribution has stayed consistent with prior years. Employee benefits and salaries continue to be the largest driver of that, representing 76% of our total expenditures. So, again, we are a people business that spends a majority of our revenues on salaries. Purchased services is the third largest category, and that's at 14%. Again, as a district that's kind of relied on an outsourcing model for many years, most of that goes to our three main outsourced vendors for custodial services, which is Airmark, First Student, which we use for transportation, and then Organic Life, who we outsource food service to. One of the challenges of that that we'll cover is when we talk about minimum wage increases and some of the changes that are happening in that arena. Even though those expenditures to our district show up as purchased services, those vendors are also kind of in the people business, and their largest expenditures tend to be their staff as well. So, we're starting to see where they are passing on those minimum wage costs to us, and they may not show up, and our reports is salaries or benefits, but they're having a similar impact of increasing those expenditures for us. Their remaining expenditures, again, make up the smallest portion, just 10% total. I will point out that the capital outlay shown here is just what we have spent out of operating in our forecasting for operating in the future. We do also spend capital and invest in our buildings through the Capital Projects Fund, which we'll cover shortly. So, again, these are the expenditure assumptions that are built into this forecast, and, again, these are done at a high level and are likely to change, and we are looking at, hopefully, addressing some of these larger outliers here. But, the salary assumptions do align with our current collective bargaining agreements. We are projecting a minimum wage increase of, at $500,000 a year by the year 2025. That really is just raising current minimum wage employees are up to what will be the minimum wage in 2025. So, that doesn't factor in how some of our contractual service providers may look to pass on their increases to us, and also, if we will need to increase other salaries to kind of keep pace with that minimum wage increase. Health benefits are projected to increase about 68% annually. That's really based on current experience with our health plans. Two areas where we are projecting significant increased costs and have seen trends kind of above CPI are in the special education out-of-district tuition, and then, transportation services. So, this forecast has those increasing by 9% and 9.5% respectfully. One of the challenges in these areas is they are not included in the evidence-based funding model, they're included in those categorical payments. And we've seen, even though as the evidence-based funding model has replaced GSA, the categorical payments are still unpredictable and subject to proration. And so, where the model may suggest we would be receiving additional revenue to offset some of these increases, we haven't really built that into this forecast. We're just, you know, still not quite confident in the state's ability to fund those categorical payments fully. And then, finally, we have built in a Consumer Price Index increase for some of those other expenditure categories that aren't covered by some of these other increases.
I'd just like to state that the special education out-of-district tuition is, it increases, nothing that's new. All of the years that I've been in the business office, and depending upon who was in charge of the special education department, I had discussions about that trend. And that trend is not unique to us. I would say that we're better than most districts at evaluating who goes out for services, whether or not we can service them inside. And a lot of that is just the cost of the programs going up over and over and over again. So, I can tell you that early in my career in the business office, I did a lot of digging on that, and it is what it is. Our transportation purchase services increases of 9.5%, that is a strain on the district, and is going to continue to be a strain on the district. Matt and I and Ron and other members of the business department have talked about coming up with ideas where we can try to soften the impact of the cost of our transportation contract. We have a contract extension, which is the 9.5%. We can go out for bid and potentially have a larger increase, and then, adjust back to the Consumer Price Index. So, it would be a one-time hit that would be pretty significant. We've had some board memos go to you that, you know, we're seeing 20% and 30% increases, and it's just driven by the economy. Their salaries are going up because they need to find drivers, because their drivers are not, they're leaving the school bus industry and going to drive cross-country or other places where they can make more money. That is significant, will continue to be significant, and is something that is driving the next two slides, really. So, when you think about what we've done as a school district, we've moved money into Fund 60 by the sale of property, we've moved money into Fund 60 because of the developer contributions, and through board resolution, if there was a little bit of money left over, we moved it over there so that we could continue to fund the operations of our, capital outlay of our schools, put roofs and asphalt and all of that on. We leaned on that a little bit the last few years to help Todd get some of his projects done and to get up around that eight and a half, nine million dollars that the EMG study said we should be spending to keep our buildings in good shape. Well, with our transportation contract going up so high, we need to lean less on Fund 20 to balance our budget, which is Todd's operations and maintenance budget. So, in these forecasts, over the course of the five years, what you see happening is you see the fund balances in transportation starting to drop, and the fund balances in Todd's Fund 20 starting to increase, because we have to lean more on Fund 60 to get these projects done. Variety of ways you can skin this cat, we can go back to spending much less on our buildings, spending, you know, three or three and a half million dollars out of Fund 20 so that we can free up money for the transportation increases and get some evidence-based funding done. In this forecast, we decided to spend down Fund 60 over the course of these five years so that we can free up some of the money to get evidence-based funding elements in and take care of the transportation. I can tell you on this next slide, as you see that decrease go down, there's a couple of things that aren't factored in here, and that is continued impact fees are pretty modest, at about $800,000 or $1 million annually. And, you know, if we do have additional money at the end of this year, maybe we do move some money over there to Fund 60 through resolution. You know, it might be a million and a half, it might be $2 million, it might be less. But the goal is to get out to 2027, keep our buildings in shape, get out to 2027, retire our debt service, and hopefully, move some of that money into operation, into the operating fund. You know, essentially, if you go back to, way back on these slides, and you look at our debt services here, that red line represents about $28 million of levy that goes to paying off our buildings. If you can move that over to the operating side in 2027, the district's going to be in a pretty solid shape.
And Jay, as a reminder, you know, the stance that what you're doing in helping to service our, keeping our operations and our buildings and facilities was something that was a priority, a high priority from our portrait of graduate, from Engage 204.
Absolutely. We really, when we were going through the stressful times of the poor economy, we, our goal was to stay away from the classrooms. And for a number of years, we were pretty successful at finding ways to reduce our expenditures and stay away from the classrooms. And operations and maintenance probably took the heaviest hit, and did for a number of years. So, we racked up quite a deferred maintenance plan. I think if we had more money, if we had, if we could give operations and maintenance $12 million, we couldn't get all the projects done. We couldn't find the staff, we couldn't find the companies to come in and get all the roofs done. We are pretty maxed out at about $8 million of what we can get done annually. So, that's why you're seeing that trend, and I know there were some board questions and concerns about that. If we could find some ways to save some money through transportation, we might fix that. Wrote a board memo two or three weeks ago about going out for health insurance bid, for management of our health insurance. Last time we did this was about six years ago, we picked up a million or a million and a half of savings. And that's not driven by the economy, that is just driven by pure competition. So, I expect that we will see a savings there, which will impact this forecast as well.
Jay, you said that once we retire, the debt is about 28 million. So, if you were going to break that down per taxpayer, you know, or per household, how much money would that be on their tax bill?
Well, it's about 50 cents on every $100,000 worth of EAV. So, I'd have to run the numbers to look at exactly what So, I'd have to run the numbers to look at exactly what it would be for a $300,000 home. It wouldn't be much, it would be $20. And essentially what you would do is you'd ask for a no-tax increase. You would say, listen, we're retiring all of this debt on the, on this side and we would like to go to referendum to bring it over on this side, the operating side, which is what West Aurora did four or five years ago. So, you know, they, they passed it pretty overwhelmingly because, and then essentially what they were able to do then was they were able to take money that they were levying to pay off the schools and move it over to running the district.
Yeah, that, pretty good deal, really, 20 bucks.
What I just heard was a little troubling about not even being able to get projects done. Like, we might dig so deep of a hole that we can't drive fast enough to, to get ahead of it?
No, we're getting, we're getting ahead of it, we're getting our deferred maintenance done, but we've, we've really tapped out our ability to drive any faster to get it done. It, it took several years for us to get into the position where we had all that deferred maintenance. It's going to take several years for us to get out of it. And, and if we freed up 12 million dollars for operations and maintenance, you might not find enough roofing contractors to get that work done in that fiscal year. Or quality ones that you would want working on our schools.
Some, some of what you, some of, some of the work that you do, that Todd does, is driven by seasonality as well. They're, you've talked about before, so sometimes there's a window of when projects can be completed.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's during the summer months when students aren't around. We did have a great conversation in the cabinet about doing a number of projects now while kids are in session, which is, you know, it's new for some of the cabinet members, but for folks who've been around a long time, we were putting additions on school while school was in session. And that's one way to get more work done and to speed up getting ahead of our deferred
All right, we just have a, a couple more quick slides on, on the non-operating funds here. So this is the bond and interest fund payment schedule and we cheated a little bit, we went out seven years instead of five so that we would have the ability to, to actually show, show the, the line get to zero. So, as you, as you could see, we are gradually paying down our outstanding bond and interest obligations. You could see as, the, the payments are relatively level for the next five years before decreasing slightly and then taking that, that big dip right in 2027. And, just like a home mortgage, as the, as we make more and more payments, the principal piece becomes gradually larger and the interest piece becomes gradually smaller. So, again, seven years out instead of five, but we are, at least at the point where we can start, maybe, maybe it's not in the, the near future, but at least, at least we can start looking towards that 2027 date when the bonds are finally retired. This is the non-operating forecast then, this combines both the capital and bond and interest in the, the same view that we showed the operating forecast at the beginning of the presentation. And again, what, what this reflects is really what we just covered with those, those previous two slides, that we're going to gradually see a slight decrease in the revenue as we pay down those debt, those, those bond payments, that property tax piece gets a little bit smaller. And then we also see a gradual decrease in the fund balance as we, as we work to decrease that Capital Projects Fund as well. So again, right now, we're, we do have a, a balance of about 24 million, I believe, in the, the Capital Projects Fund, but, you know, if we stay with this forecast, we would spend that fund balance down almost completely by the end of 2025. The remaining non-operating fund balance would be almost exclusively the, the bond and interest component.
So what you're telling me is we're not going to make it to 2027?
Not necessarily.
As forecasted, with 100% certainty on this, I get it.
We anticipate more developer contributions than we have built into this budget. We anticipate that we'll run a tight budget like we always have and will hopefully be able to move through resolution each of these years, a little bit of money into Fund 60 so that we can continue to get that work done.
I think you're running for office.
All right, so, the last slide, just, just to kind of update sort of the future action here, as we, we sit here on February 10th, we will continue to monitor our assumptions and, and continue to, again, refine these and, and hopefully find some, some potential savings or potential new revenue that can be used to either implement evidence-based funding elements or, or adjust that, that mix of capital funding more into the operating fund as we've just discussed. We'll continue to monitor state of Illinois funding and what's going on in Springfield. I think that the general view is with this being an election year, that, that we don't expect a lot of potential legislation, other than the, the passing of the Fair Tax Act or the discussion of the Fair Tax referendum question, that'll be on the ballot in November. The, the early signs are that that's going to be the priority for, for our legislators in Springfield, but if anything changes that could have a material impact into this forecast, we will bring it in front of the board at a, at a future date. And then, as mentioned in the first slide, you know, this is our, this is our first forecast and this is really an attempt to look at a high level and, and again, focus on what resources are available to the district. As we continue to work in the late spring and summer towards a budget, you know, we plan to bring you a tentative budget and plan to, again, sharpen the pencils more on the expenditure side and, and hopefully refine some of the assumptions we've presented today. So, with that, I know we've had questions throughout, but if there's any other questions for Jay or I?
And as you know, the further you go out in the forecast, the more the assumptions are relevant. So, we're going to, we're going to pull back and you'll see probably a three-year forecast the next time and going through into the spring when we finally transition to a budget.
Anything else?
I, I would just like to say that I'm less depressed and I think it must be Matt that's
You're starting at a pretty low bar then, based on some of the discussions.
Matt will be up here by himself next week.
I, I, I actually was going to comment on that. Not that part, but over the course of time, sitting on the board, when we got those five-year projections, especially with the state of state funding, which is clearly, it's much more reliable now, that's the one good thing I have to say, it's much more reliable the last two to three years, that we were projecting significant deficit five years down the road. So this is, it is a little bit of an up. I said that to Jay a couple days ago. It's nice, it's nice to see a fi- a five-year figure that's positive instead of negative. Anything else? Thank you, Matt, thank you, Jay. Yeah, we are now moving back to the action item, which is, I need a motion for the approval of the Gifts and Donations Report for the first semester of 2019 to 2020.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Gifts and Donation Report for Semester 2019, 2020 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Johnston?
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Sullivan. On behalf of the schools within District 204, it's my pleasure to put before you the Gifts and Donations Report for the first semester of the 2019-20 school year. As you can see, the district and our schools are very fortunate to be supported by such a generous community and community organizations. In total, the district and our schools have received over $500,000 in donations. We want to thank specifically a couple of organizations for their assistance. First of all, our PTAs of our schools are a significant contributor across all three levels. IPEF is another major contributor at both the school and district level. And the Community Relations Department within our district office is a key contributor to finding assistance for our students in times of need. Specifically, the Wheatland Salem Church has been a major contributor through their Gift Mart program that happens at the holidays. Our students, families and schools are very fortunate to have such willing and able supports and we would like to thank them all for our, assisting our students. So at this time, we ask that you approve the Gifts and Donations Report for the first semester. Any questions?
Questions, discussion, comments?
I apologize that it asks us before and I don't need to have an answer, but maybe just a generality.
Try.
I know there were some problems with PTA memberships and a lot of the money that came into the PTAs at the beginning of the year, this year. Did that have a significant impact on what we saw for the Gifts and Donations as compared to last year? Do you remember or do you know?
I was not aware about the PTA membership issues. I think what you're seeing, the variations that you see from our PTAs have more to do with how they budget. And some give their, their monies upfront and others as throughout the school year.
And maybe it's a question I go back more to IPPC and ask them because I know they had to cut significant, every PTA was down this year and had to cut significant programs to our schools. So I'm hoping with our new SIS that improves, but, you know, I know it's been a struggle for a lot of the PTAs this year, so hopefully it won't be an issue after this year.
Exactly.
Others?
Again, I want to thank the community. In addition to the groups that you mentioned, I noted how many individual parents donated. I think it's really important. Sometimes we lose sight, I was at a STEM event on Saturday. That's primarily, if not totally funded by IPEF. And there were hundreds of happy middle school students with robots running all over.
Yep.
Burkett Center and it's because of those kinds of donations that we're able to have programs like that for our students. Again, when you go back to the last presentation, our 80% adequacy does not allow us to do everything that we would like to do. And there are a myriad of programs that are supported by these organizations that allow our students just to have a good school experience. So, I really thank the community for assisting us with that. And again, I'm very grateful for all the work that our community services within our district does in order to support our students' backpacks, supplies, holiday gifts, truly make the school a better experience because we're covering some of those things that are needed in order to perform well in a school. So, a special shout-out to them too.
Anyone else?
Just, that particular, those opportunities allow, because that particular event Saturday, although middle school allowed for additional schools outside of our district, there were a couple of schools outside of our district, so allowing our middle schoolers to begin networking and seeing those opportunities outside of our district, other than just waiting until high school, when you begin interacting with other schools was just, it's just a fantastic opportunity. So, that's, those are the types of things that the community and IPEF specifically are providing for our students, that exposure at such an early age, which is fantastic.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, go ahead.
I just want to say, it's, you know, this is an amount of money, but it is amount of work and effort that is probably immeasurable. I, I'm on the Organization for the Community Committee for Substance Abuse Prevention, they get to count our volunteer hours towards their grant. And I thought, wow, if we had to count the volunteer hours that are involved in all this, it would be millions of dollars and that's an incredible thing.
Yeah, what a great point. Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue? Ms. Demming?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the next action item, which is the Approval Policy 6:10, which is Educational Philosophy and Objectives for our first reading. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm trying to pull it up, where is it? Make a motion to approve...
Scroll.
Am I at the wrong one? Yeah, where is it?
Scroll.
Scroll up.
Right here.
I know, I've got that. I'm working for the motion.
Here, right here.
Right there, just read it right there.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. That the Board of Education approve Policy 6.10, Education Philosophy and Objective for the First Reading as presented.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
I'm really, really excited about this policy.
So, I'm going to fill, I'm filling, I'm filling in for Kathy, peas on this one. So, this is a totally optional policy through press, where there's nothing that requires us to have this policy. When we originally went to press, the board decided that they wanted this policy and wrote it. That was a number of years ago, so when press has it come up, every, every policy comes up for a five-year review. This one came up for the five-year review. So, we really worked to update it and freshen it. It's not supposed to mean everything. So, first blush, I'll tell you, some of you thought we didn't need the policy at all, some of you loved the policy, some of you wanted it to say a whole lot more, others didn't want it to say a whole lot more, so it was kind of all over the place, so here it is. So this is at least, this is administratively our recommendation for this, kind of big global philosophy and objectives for first reading.
So I was probably in the middle of that love-hate relationship. What I do like about it is that it clearly indicates what we're currently doing. And I think that's important in terms of legacy and, and it, I think, guides action for other boards in terms of direction and vision. So, I, I clearly, I clearly like it.
We tried, we tried to weave in not just strong academics, but that, the things that, the competencies through our Portrait of a Graduate, our work with social-emotional learning and tried to weave those in as part of it.
I, I think you did a great job of summing it up. It's not too complex and it says what we're doing, so, good job.
So basically, everything we do, we're going to say we align to Policy 6.10, because that's essentially what we're, what our mission is.
Any other discussion?
I'm wondering if you can get our oath to be the short.
Our oath and then, our oath and when we go into, our oath and when we go into executive session.
Mr. Carubus, you have anything?
I am ready to vote.
There you go.
Surprise.
With that, Jackie Call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. Motion passes.
Oh, forgot one. Ms. Grover? I probably did not use the correct inflection and that was...
Did you, did you get the vote? I'm sorry. Now motion passes.
Mr. Razak and Mr. Carubus.
Board of Education update, just real briefly, next, next Friday, again, the group of large member school districts will be meeting with the Illinois Association of School Boards. Again, the Illinois Association of School Boards has said that they'll be working on... Again, the Illinois Association of School Boards has said that they'll be working on several different topics, which include fee structures, which include, and which also includes staff development for us, that is more aligned for large member school districts. So I'm looking forward to that meeting, and at the next Board meeting, I'll report back and see where we're at with that. As Mr. String has said, in terms of legislation, the flowers are not out yet, and so the bills are not obvious. So we'll continue to just to watch as our legislature goes back into session and see what bills that they present to us. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Natasha.